I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, laws of nineteen seventy-five of the State of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the South River Board of Education was provided in the following manner. March seventh, two thousand nineteen, the notice was faxed, mailed to the following newspapers: Home News Tribune, Sentinel. On March seventh, two thousand nineteen, the notice was delivered to the Office of the South River Borough Clerk and posted at the Board of Education Administration Building. And on March seventh, the notice, on, on March seventh, two thousand nineteen, the notice was posted at the South River Borough Clerk's office.
Mr. Andre?
Here.
Mr. Bayzak here.
Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mrs. Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Ramat.
Here.
Mr. Whitehead has been excused.
Mrs. Cassiano.
Thank you. Board members, you all have the minutes from the September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, December seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, regular public meeting revised, February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, pre-meeting, February twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, regular public meeting, June twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, regular public meeting revised, and October eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, regular public meeting revised minutes. Your pleasure?
Motion, yes. Motion, yes.
Motion by, um, Mr. Ramat, and second by Ms. Cruz. All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, board members, we have use of facilities?
We have four members on the agenda of the South River Parks Recreation Operations Mile Club, South River Forest Department, Mrs. St. Thomas, the Apostle.
Board members, any comments or questions? Need a motion?
Move the use of facilities in accordance with board policies.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bush. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Cruz, would you take care of the financial report, please?
May I resolve that the Board of Education hereby certifies that literacy and literacy in the financial report which indicates that no major account has been over-spended and that submission funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for their remainder of fiscal year. The Finance Committee recommends that the reports of the Board Secretary and the Treasurer of School Monies for January two thousand nineteen be included by December.
Motion by Mrs. Cruz.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we are going to open up the meeting for the reception of visitors. Uh, this particular time, this open session is for items on the agenda only. There will be another public session at the end of the meeting that will be open for any items whatsoever pertaining to Board of Education. Uh, when you come up to the podium, would you please state your name and address and please keep your comments limited to ten minutes, again, for agenda items only. Anyone from the public? Saying none? No one, Mr. Ramat?
I don't see anyone.
Um, just maybe.
I was wondering if you could go back, see if anybody's in the back. Wow, what did you make?
Then we will, uh, move to close the public portion. Thank you. Uh, at this time, we will, with the Superintendent of Schools, give her monthly report.
Thank you, Mr. Ramat. Uh, I would like to begin by, um, talking about Read Across Mariposa, which took place at the start of this month. I had the pleasure of being able to go to the primary school and elementary school and meet, uh, to some of our students. Um, I just received some thank you notes from our first graders and I'm, I'm glad to record it was a hit, they asked me to come back, so that's good news. And, uh, but we had a really great time. Uh, we posted some pictures of, um, all of our readers, um, on Facebook. Um, some of our kids were in pajamas, we celebrated Pajama Day, um, uh, A W B Comedy with a reading day. It was just a really nice, um, nice day for, for especially among the students. Uh, so it's a good segue to talk about our new literacy program. Um, the new literacy program was introduced to our, uh, Instruction Committee. It was vetted through our, uh, teacher leaders who got the opportunity to look at several, um, several options from various vendors of a reading program for grades eight through five. Our materials, we had, we had discussed this last year when we were planning the budget for the eighteen-nineteens for you. Our reading materials at the elementary level, um, were extremely outdated and they were not, um, in compliance with the current reading standards. And so with that in mind, we, we set forth to find a new program that would be aligned, um, would be current and would be, um, the very needs of, of our students. So the, the teachers, um, strongly, um, felt that this was the right, the right program. We had, um, we had put several examples, um, and information about the program in our school, uh, media centers for the other teachers to come by and take a look as well before we adopted it. So really getting a lot of feedback on the people who are actually going to use the program, um, itself. And, um, they're very excited to receive it. It is on your agenda tonight to approve, um, and as soon as you do approve it, the teachers have access to the electronic materials that come with the program, um, including materials for ELL students, um, advanced reading level students, um, as well as our struggling leaders. So they'll have access to, um, to the materials, they'll start receiving professional development, um, this spring, and then, um, we'll have full implementation by September. So really excited.
I just met, um, with Dr. Trixano with our lunch and recess dates. Uh, the weather is getting nice, thank goodness, kids are going to be outside, and we want to make sure that we're ready to have a, a, just a good, safe, um, and productive recess for our kids. So we met as a group, we talked about, um, a lot of things that we really need to, to investigate a little bit further and take a look at in order to improve, um, conditions. But as you know, I like to meet with different groups in the district, and, um, this was one group that I hadn't met with yet, um, as a, as a team. So, um, so it was really very productive to sit down with them and really listen and understand their experiences day to day in managing lunch and recess and then seeing how we can really, really make it the best it can be for them and for kids. Um, so that was definitely a productive curriculum fair update. We've been sending out a flyer everywhere. We know, um, our county superintendent will be in attendance that night, he has already repeated, he will be coming. Um, the mayor will be in attendance that night. Um, we're, we're really just hoping that we can get as much attendance as we can, it's going to be a great, great event. We have, um, our boards have arrived and teachers are all restarting to put together student displays. Um, it's really going to be a great night, so we're, we're very much looking forward to that. Uh, New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. It seems like for the past, I don't know, three months or so, I gave you an update from NJDLE of what's happening with assessments, especially at the high school level and graduation requirements. Sure enough, I have another update for you that came out on March eighteenth, um, and that is that, uh, as per the New Jersey State Board of Education, um, they are now requiring districts to administer the end-of-course statewide assessments in language arts format to students in grade eleven who have otherwise non-graduation requirement. So upon hearing that, we adjusted our assessment schedule. Uh, we have removed those students from having to take an assessment, especially if it's not required, um, and we are now just working with those students who have not got a graduation requirement, and really just working with them individually to see what the best path for each of those students is, um, towards meeting the, the requirement. So I know our company, our board rep is super pleased to hear this news because it directly applies to her, and, um, and I know she's, um, she's, she's happy to hear that as well. And, um, so concludes my report.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions or any comments?
No, I wanted to thank you for sharing the flyer in our package because I did take it and drove it and posted it, not only on my Facebook page, but also on the Union of Girls' Athletic Club. So hopefully you'll get it. And I'll, I'll continue to do that as we get closer.
I've seen you starting to share, I, I was going to, but I haven't yet.
Yeah, that seems to be a good buzz.
Yes.
That's good.
Yeah. It's a friendly buzz, it's not much of a...
Yeah, which I mentioned last night, it's been taken, so.
Thank you.
Are we planning to mail those to the students who are at the charter schools?
Yes, we did so last year, we invited them, um, we'll do that again this year. The other thing that you have that's kind of coming around for you to see, there are two things. Um, one is a picture of our, um, upcoming preschool playground, um, just so you can see what's coming up this spring. This is in addition to our existing playground at the primary school. Um, this was purchased with our preschool expansion funds. And then the other thing coming around is our promotional district flyer, which is really for the purpose of telling the community what we're all about in our school district, and that will be also, is there a question? That will be going out this, uh, tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, if there are no other, uh, comments or questions on the superintendent's report, I'll accept a motion to accept.
No, Mr. Anderson's report?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cruz, second by Mr. Nielsen, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now do the consent resolution. Uh, at this time, I'd just like to ask the board members if they have any items that they would like to be polled under any of the committees for an individual vote.
Aye. Uh, okay. Just we're okay then, yeah, we're good.
Okay, keynotes. And there are none to be polled for an individual vote, thank you.
Mr. Ramat, you're gonna do a deal negotiations, eh?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Were we gonna say that during the consent meeting? Oh, okay, so then, uh, under negotiations, we are not... Just keep changing it up, okay? Just keep changing it up, okay? Uh, under negotiations, we are going to remove item number one, uh, we need to discuss that in closed session, and when we come out of closed sessions, we will be voting on that separately.
The South River Board of Education means of a consent resolution is not parentless resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time, whereas the below listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Board of Education and hold as if the same were individuals acted upon in the superintendent's report, item number two. Athletics, item one, the finance items, one through twenty-seven, instruction items, one through nine, policy legislation, item one, human resource items, one through nine, and safety and risk, item one.
Board members, do we have a motion?
Move your motion.
Seven. Go call?
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Bayzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes, standing by, uh, finance nineteen.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Let's go back.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we will now move into our committee reports. First is athletics and extracurricular.
Mrs. Beck? Yes, just talked this, uh, you know, I haven't recorded this before than last time. Um, I have, uh, yeah, winter sports all over and we're into spring sports now, getting ready to, scrimmages, I believe, all starting this weekend and so, uh, and then some football things from last season. In wrestling, Kenny Cross placed third in, um, the G, GMC Wrestling Tournament, and he's, uh, in the All Blue Division. He also made the All Blue Division, sorry. The report just doubled is how everything was done. Trying to consolidate it here. Um, Derek Widger, um, senior basketball, scored over two thousand points in his, uh, school career. He finished, uh, second all-time leading scorer, I mean, second all-time leading scorer in the school district. He was named All Blue Division and All Conference Teams. And then in bowling, we have Alani Fugulus, placed second in the girls' GMC Bowling Tournament, and Caleb Kalena Grimmage placed twenty-fifth in the same, I'm sorry, the state bowling tournament. Both girls, uh, received all-division honors and all-conference. Little league, uh, Alani, Alani was number one in both. So which is very, very exciting. And then, um, Senior Oliver Carn, who's our fencing, uh, player, that's right, um, placed sixth in the state. And then, a bunch of other little things. We have, um, got an update from Miss Perkins today, like I try to do every month, just choose to get up to date. The past two days, Coach LaForte and the varsity baseball team have held a championship for the Little Leaguers. It's the nineteenth year in a row, this time they have over seventy children participating. Um, the coaches and players all volunteer at times, it's no cost to us, and everybody benefits from it, it's wonderful. They do the fundamentals of hitting, catching, running, pitching, and anything else that makes sense, outstanding, um, fed for our community. Uh, Ms. Urcher has actually donated, um, an elliptical and a treadmill for the students to use in the weight room. And one last thing, with the robotics team, the high school robotics, they had, um, their first competition two weeks ago. After qualifiers, they were ranked number seven, ended up being captain of team number four, and finished in the set, lost in the semi, so they were ranked number three or four. Um, and then they won best teams for, their next competition is this weekend in Mansandale, Pennsylvania. Um, if somebody, anybody can go and, uh, watch? Anybody, so, anybody, there's no charge to go, it's just getting there. And so concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, any board members have anything regarding to the athletics report?
No, just, um, middle school track has their opening, uh, day tomorrow, so if anybody's in the area, you want to, uh, support the middle schoolers.
And there's a volleyball clinic going on on Wednesday, uh, Wednesday evenings, and it's open through middle school. All good stuff. Thank you. Um, Billings and grounds, Mr. Nielsen? Oh, okay. Do you want this?
Yeah.
Sorry, I should've gave you a fair point.
You may add something.
Sorry?
Uh, I guess I would be seeing what was going on. Uh, light bulbs, battles who were placed, uh, desks who were repaired, moving in and out of classrooms, ceiling tiles installed where there were missing, stained, or damaged, broken clocks were replaced where necessary, receiving and distribution of daily packages and deliveries, fire extinguishers checked for charge, troubleshooting various H-Back requirements, code for intent adjustments for classrooms, delivery of daily provisions among schools for charcoal, staff took part in school safety drills to ensure proper function in the fire safety system, and daily monitoring, collection of litter and trash to include throughout school. That's just about it. Keep us motivated.
And no more snow.
No more s- snow.
Says there.
No more snow. Just so you know, I was supposed to be baseball with you. On April fifth, nineteen seventy, I forgot what year it was, it, uh, was an open day, little snow down, just...
They did give us snow down last year, just...
That's right.
Speaking of baseball, I just wanted to say, we did the field talk, uh, last week.
Thank you. Um, under finance, Mrs. Cruz?
Yes, um, we had, um, a change to number two approved summit revised P A two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year budget. Um, there was an addition to number twelve approved proposition list. And then new from the other, um, last week, thirteen approved contract Ben Chopper Recreation Inc., Playground Equipment, primary school two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Fourteen approved contract Green Lane Contractors Playground Equipment Installation, primary school two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Fifteen approved contract Custom Maintenance and Loan Care Law Maintenance Services, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school years. Sixteen approved contract Commission of the Line through the Department of Human Services, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Seventeen approved contract Liberty Science Center Field Trip Service Provider, two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Eighteen approved contract Villiani West Company, Dording Art Field Trip Service Provider, two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Nineteen approved contract Rutgers University of the General Healthcare Home Destruction Service Provider, two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Twenty approved A C F, two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, tuition placement, transportation, Old Ridge Township Board of Education. Twenty-one approved contract the College Board Alternative Assessment Provider, High School Acuplacer Test, two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Twenty approved, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, non-public security grant purchase for Dubul Akon. Twenty-three approved contract in the Royal Hill Education Literacy Professionals Development Program, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and two thousand nineteen, twenty school years. Twenty-four approved contract Professional Education Services Inc., High Focus Centers Home Destruction Service Provider, two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Twenty-five approved contract with Essel and Marvel Expires Special Education Training, two thousand eighteen, twenty school years. Sixteen approved, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, non-public security grant purchase of pillars carpentry. And twenty-seven approved contract Junior Achievement of New Jersey Field Trip Service Provider, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
Thank you, board members. Any questions or comments and findings, I guess? Thank you. Uh, now from the Instruction Committee, Mr. Ramat?
Thank you, Vice President. Uh, now, unfortunately, I wasn't here on the eighteenth for the, uh, pre-reading, but, uh, Mrs. Bush, uh, I can't recommend sending them no additional items.
We have a couple...
Is the third version, that's one?
Oh.
I'm looking.
Number five.
Eight and nine are new, Mr. Ramat. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Uh, number eight, approved professional development and travel expenses, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Number nine, approved revised curriculum guides.
Thank you. Uh, under negotiations, we are going to be going to closed sessions to discuss item number one, so we'll move on to the policy and legislation report. Mrs. Bush?
Nothing new since last meeting.
Thank you.
Good job.
Uh, human resources, Mr. Nielsen?
We have three tonight. Positions approved March eighth substitute March eighth, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Eight approved title award reallocation grant advisors, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year, and twenty nineteen, twenty school year. Nine approved white coat for the staff, elementary school, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
Thank you. Uh, safety and risk management, Mr. Andre?
I have nothing here.
Thank you. Uh, and other school community relations, Mr. Bayzak?
Thank you. I have a look, Madam President. Number one, congratulations to all well-merited students who have hard work hanging at George Street Playhouse in recognition of U. Bartman, Adriana Serrano, third grade, Jayden Chakel, fourth grade, Aiden Ollerman, fifth grade. We are proud to recognize these students and the teacher, this Patricia Brans, for this accomplishment. Number two, February Student of Month for sixth grade, congratulations to Liliana Calabas for being selected as Assistant Grade Student of Month for February. Liliana feels that she is a good role model for her classmates because she's very helpful and always tries to cheer them up on their feeling sad. She works hard in school and always gives maximum effort. Congratulations to Liliana. Number three, the February Student of Month, seventh grade, for Jerry Luminas, a seventh grade student, seventh grade student of month for February. He gets good grades for Jerry, who ends it always work on time and takes his time doing his assignments. His favorite subject is math because he prefers numbers over words. Congratulations to Jerry. Number four, the February Student of Month for the eighth grade, Viviana Prada, is named the eighth grade Student of Month for February. She's a great student described by all of her teachers. She says that studying, hard work, making good notes, and by listening in class, she's able to get good grades. She loves her E L A class because she enjoys writing especially fictional stories. Number five, the South River High School Student of Month for February, Nadine Rabab, Rabab, is the February Student of Month due to her outstanding character, achievements in our school, for the year. Derek Widger is also the February Student of Month. His list of service activities within the community are very impressive. Number six, the High School Robotics Club. As Cheryl mentioned, at the first robotics competition at Bridgewater High School, the Rambotics team came in third place out of thirty-five teams. Rambotics team is, is not yet done. It will continue to succeed at Bell's Mansandale, Pennsylvania, competition on March thirtieth and the thirty-first, all names. Number seven, the Kindness Club at Elementary School, hosted the jump rope for art event for the American Art Association. Congratulations to our students who exceeded our goal of four thousand by raising five thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars. Thank you for your support. Number eight, the March Student of Month for sixth grade, congratulations to Estabo Lopez for being selected as Assistant Grade Student of Month for March. Estabo feels that he is a good role model because he has worked hard on learning the English language. Number nine, the March Student of Month for seventh grade, Alexa Ngao is the seventh grade Student of Month for March. To get good grades, Alexa turns to her work on time, turns to work on time, tries to turn best in everything, stays organized, and prepares for her test in quizzes. Number ten, the March Student of Month, eighth grade, Sarah Abukaba Akaba, I'm sorry, Ah, Awa, is the eighth grade Student of Month for March. Sarah exhibits good character by always being polite and respectful to others. She's a good role model by always being prepared for the last on time and helpful to others. And number eleven, the Millses County Unsub bureaus. Each year, the Millses County School Board Association and the Millses County Association of School Ministers recognize a junior, senior for each high school in Millses County. The honorees are our school, the honorees are our schools' unsub bureaus and eras, students who make outstanding contributions to the school communities, but who often would be overlooked on their traditional student recognition patterns. South River High School is proud to announce that two senior, that senior Tuanwen and junior Catherine Zory were selected to represent our school this year and were honored at the event held at Olgers High School for all of the county members. All model good citizenship, exhibit a spirit of quiet strength that has inspired others. And that's all I have for me.
Thank you. Our school board vote, Council Liaison Committee, Mrs. Cruz, any report?
No, I have no updates for tonight. I would just like to comment on the, um, press releases. Thank you for the invitation to attend, uh, unsub year, I was, uh, he said, I have excuses. Thank you.
And our PTA liaison, Mrs. Beck?
Sure. Um, last night I met with the primary school PTA, they've, um, had a meeting that they're willing to. Um, they're working on funding, which is, um, scheduled as of right now, May twenty-fourth to the rainy day of May twenty-ninth. Um, their second grade celebration is on June seventh, and then their next meeting is on Thursday, April eighteenth at six-thirty. The elementary school's next meeting is next week, so it's April fourth at five-thirty. And then middle school is on Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, so it's in two months, and that's the last one they have of the year. And then the high school, um, Mrs. Schinetta Smith actually sent me a text a little earlier to give me an update, just that she wanted to report it on, was that, um, at Father's Day, can, uh, people learn, people? Thank you, and I knew I was saying it wrong. And Schinetta Smith were, um, both recognized lifetime members. Um, scholarships are available for graduating students, applications are to be submitted to the high school guidance office. And then she's really thinking ahead.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah. The two thousand and nineteen homecoming dance will be held on October twelfth. And their next, their final meeting, I believe it's their final meeting, is on Wednesday, April seventeenth at six o'clock. So concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Bayzak, anything from the South River Public Library?
As I say every month, there's a lot of good things going on in the South River Library Springs here. There's all kinds of events for all ages, libraries that were really worth our hard put this stuff together and everybody, you know, the school should, uh, support. That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Bush, South River Foundation for Educational Excellence Liaison.
Okay, I got three things that I'd like to discuss. Uh, yes, first and foremost, um, they're looking for student ambassadors, so again, Schinetta has urged that, uh, anybody interested to pick up an application, guidance, their website, uh, Facebook, uh, they need a letter of recommendation. The other piece she wanted me to mention is that scholar, the senior scholarship is available. Again, that's to be picked up in guidance. And they are actively planning more fundraisers to be announced later. The next meeting's gonna be April sixteenth, in this room, seven P M.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Barton, anything from your attorney's report?
We'll have a couple things to discuss in the executive session.
Thank you. And Ms. Cassiano, our student board representative? At this time, board members, is there any old or new business to come before the board?
If I may, uh, let's go.
Yes.
I, uh, attended, uh, four events over the last month. Uh, one was, uh, Mr. South River. Let me tell you. If you haven't gone to see Mr. South River, you've missed out. It is two and a half, three hours, whatever it is, of pure fun. Twenty-four seniors that participated, which is most we ever had, actually.
Usually it sounds taller.
Yeah. And it's a takeoff on, uh, Mr. Barry, to make that. And these guys were really very hard to make it a fun night for everybody. And at the end, the, uh, Mr. South River was crowned, this year it was, uh, Joe Trump.
Phil Trump.
Phil Trump, they, I knew that, I tested you. It was, uh, Billy Trump, and, you know, these kids built such a bond among themselves that anybody who saw it...
who saw it knows what I mean, it's very hard to describe, but such a bond that at the end, all twenty-three of the other kids with the billy up on their shoulders, compared them around the stage. They were rooting for each other and hoping each other did well, and some kid, every kid there had the talent part of the show, like you were in Mr. Barrett. And in order to make the skit work out well, the other boys helped, every kid got help from the other kids with his own skin. They just helped each other. It was great, it was super, if you ever get a chance to see, even if you don't have a child in high school, oh, anyway, it's a lot of fun. Sick, yes.
Real fast, a fun fact for you, that was Billy Drum's second Mr. South River pageant.
Really?
He was in one of the originals when he was in elementary school. He was hired, well, helped out playing the pepper pot, to one of the acts away by one.
But there you go. It's a great, thank you, Mr. Bush, it was a great, great fun night and helps build community spirit. I also attended the elementary school play, Alen, and it was just outstanding, outstanding. The kids worked very hard, the administrators cooperated fully, and I want to congratulate also Mr. Bodie and Mrs. Rodriguez, who are the student advisors, who worked very hard with these kids, and these kids were just outstanding, I can't tell you how good it was. Middle school play, also outstanding, and this was Beauty and the Beast, and I'll tell you, the way they made things happen, and absolutely spectacular, the way the beauty and the beast danced, and the beast turned into Prince, I just can't say enough about it, so congratulations to all of them. And then last night, as Mrs. Cruz mentioned, I had the pleasure of being at the Millses County School Boards Association Student Recognition Night. And there were sixty-nine students who were recognized from various schools around Millses County. They got a beautiful certificate, and as was read by Mr. Bayzak, it's the things that you wouldn't necessarily be publicly recognized for, what you do, and you do these things and you make a difference without looking for recognition. And I could go on forever, some of the kids did, but it was nice. They had a big screen up in front of the room, and I would say there were about two hundred people there last night, if you can't be administered in the cameras.
Yes, you have.
Maybe even more.
I think you were.
Could have been, yeah, could have been. And every one of these kids deserved a standing ovation. I mean, that's how good the stuff they did was. And I could give you example after example, but I won't really, but it was very fun. I was glad to be a member of that association, but I was there to be there. Now, on a personal note, just want to let everybody know, and I want to make sure that people of South River understand what I'm talking about with this. Every word I say about school issues, every vote I cast, these board members, and everything I do about school issues, I do with one thing in mind, and that is the best interest of this school issue, and nothing else. It has never been politically driven, it has not now been politically driven, and will never be politically driven, regardless of what some people around town think.
Thank you, Mr. Rosanna. Okay, at this time, we'll have a motion for the opinion of bills. The finance committee recommends that all bills presented, having been certified by the school business administrator, board secretary, Pete Gate, at the C N S O. Motion by Mrs. Cruz?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now again, at this time, we will open up the meeting for reception of visitors. At this time, the public may bring up any concern or comment that they have for the board. Please state your name and address, and please keep your comments to a ten-minute time limit. And remember, a public which you to address the board. Sure?
Yes, sir.
First call? Second call? Say none, we hope to close the public portion. Okay, thank you. At this time, the board will be going into closed session. Resolve that pursuant to section seven and eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, the following subjects be discussed at a session of the Board of Education closed to the public, and those subjects are negotiations and personnel. It is presently anticipated that the items to be discussed in the closed session can be disclosed to the public when resolved. We have a motion.
Nielsen.
Bush.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mrs. Bush. Local?
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Bayzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Yes. Motion, sir.